...a minute after. It is Tuesday, January 12th, and the meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California is now meeting in regular session. We are back at a closed session. Before we get on with the business of the day, I would ask that we please observe a moment of silence for your special intentions. So, thank you. So, the Board of Supervisors is County of Del Norte, is governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts. And before we get on with the business of today's meeting, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. So, we're going to get right to the fun. Nominations for the election of Chair. Can I get a nomination, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like tonight nominate Jerry Hemmingson as Chairman of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors 2016.
Okay. And Supervisor Hemmingson, you willing to accept that?
I am.
Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to close the nominations?
I would like to nominate Chris Howard.
Okay. Chris, you willing to serve?
No.
Okay. Well, then, we will not put that forward.
I just wanted him to know that I have a voice of confidence.
Good.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for that. Can I get a motion, then, for, to close the nominations?
So moved.
And the Chair will second. All those in favor of Supervisor Hemmingson to serve as the next Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Jerry. It's yours.
Here. I want to warn you so I didn't pull it out.
Sit down.
So that I don't fall back on my back?
There you go.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for mostly being confident in me. Appreciate that. We're going to move on. We're going to move on to the nomination of Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations? I can't do both.
I'll go ahead and nominate Supervisor Howard be the Vice Chair.
Okay. Mr. Howard, are you willing to serve as Vice Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? You got a motion to close the nominations?
Motion to close.
Okay. All second. All those in favor of Supervisor Howard being Vice Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Introduction of new employees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Christopher Thorpe, County Veterans Service Office outgoing. I would like to introduce Aaron Goodwin, who's our new County Veterans Service Officer. We've been training now for a couple of days. He's doing really well, is a bright guy. So, want to say a few words, Aaron?
Sure. Just for qualification purposes, active duty Air Force, eight and a half years, currently a member of Army National Guard, grew up in Oregon, moved out here from Wyoming earlier last year. Just moving in position, so I'm just training for it. Pretty excited to be here, though.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Did the, did the position bring you to the area?
Actually, no. My spouse, she got a position with the Park Service, so graduated from University of Wyoming on the G.I. Bill and just spontaneously moved out here. Wanted to serve.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thanks for coming.
Great. And thanks. And thank you, Chris, for your time. I guess you're moving on? Oh, not moving on very far. Ooh. Okay. Any reportable actions out of closed session, County Council?
No reportable action.
Okay. At this time, I would request any deletions or deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to brief reports from County Supervisors. We're going to start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chairman Hemmingson. Relatively brief report. Was not here at the December 8th meeting, welcomed a new grandchild into our family in Southern California, spent some time down there. Also, Angie and I took a trip to the Caribbean and really enjoyed a little time away. Starting the New Year, January 4th, the Redwood Coast Transit Authority met in closed session for a special meeting to discuss a personnel matter. No announcement on anything on that as yet. Future Facilities Infrastructure Committee met to discuss a number of issues, one of which was a boundary or perhaps a fence issue at Clifford Camp Park. Also discussed with no action taken was how the Board of Supervisors wishes to address certain security issues after Sheriff Aperson presented his security report to, regarding the Flynn Center. The Goals Committee also agreed to invite a presentation of solar energy, which purports to save energy costs for Del Norte County facilities. We're taking that, and they'll be coming before our Board soon. Other matters discussed came from probation and borrow ranch for new modular housing, a leaking roof at Juvenile Hall, new security windows at the probation office. Also want to recognize some impending retirements. Jim Buckles will be stepping down as animal shelter, is great service to Del Norte County, and want to personally congratulate Timatee, 27 years, retired as Commander from the Sheriff's Department. He'll be missed. On a more somber note, I returned to Del Norte County just before the New Year to learn that my urologist, Mark Davis, was closing his decades-long practice and relocating to the Midwest, and that will be done within the next two weeks. He was leaving not because he wanted to leave, but because he was compelled to leave because his position was being, an alternate position of urologist, was being supplemented and subsidized by Sutter Coast. It's no secret that Dr. Davis was an outspoken critic of Sutter Coast and his desire to move to critical access status, and many of you know that equates the removal of beds from the hospital from 49 down to 25. I can draw no other conclusion than management emphasis to bring in another urologist to our community, one which was certainly not needed or mentioned in the Camden Report, was very troubling to me, and I'm not quite sure what to draw the conclusion, other than if you have a dissent, there's going to be some vindictiveness. This is all in light of Sutter Health's $10.8 million profit that it showed for 2014. It looks like it's going to have, be in a very robust position for 2015. So, on Item 24 on today's agenda, which allows the Chairman, Chairman Hemmingson, to sign and send appropriate letters to state and federal governments, I'm going to ask the Board to send an appropriate letter to the State Board of Equalization, asking for a review and possible revocation of Sutter Coast property tax exemption, which deprives Del Norte County of precious revenues, and I will outline those reasons during the scheduled Item 24 on today's agenda. That's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes, thank you. I also will try to be brief. I, after the last meeting, attended the Regional Council of Rural Counties meeting in Sacramento, where we held elections, and happy to announce that Rex Bone of Humboldt County will go, start going through the Chairs. He was elected to be the second Vice President, and they will get sworn in later this month. Then I had to go down to Riverside for the California Transportation Commission meeting of the road usage charge. It was the last monthly meeting where we presented our findings and recommendations to the Legislature. That will go to Legislature, has gone to Legislature, where they will enact our recommendations or do something with it, and then we will meet again probably quarterly. So, made sure that the rural counties were representative and that we would not bear a disproportionate burden for any proposed new road usage charge in lieu of the gas tax. Went to Klamath along with the Sheriff and some of my fellow supervisors to take part in a ceremony regarding the signing of the cross-deputization. Sheriff, thank you very, very much. You know that probably 20 years ago, it was on my first campaign literature that I wanted to see cross-deputization, and it just shows you how perseverance and the right personnel, sometimes it just takes a while, but congratulations, that was a great ceremony, and that tribal councils, I think, gets along great with this Board. Looking forward to ongoing communication and working together. Then attended a Special Board meeting, the Board of Supervisors training regarding security. Very sobering, and will be taking some actions sometime in the future. Had an airport JPA meeting. Things are well at the airport. We're fast going into the next phase, which is going to be construction, and stay tuned for that. As far as employments, they seem to be holding their own and getting better, as a matter of fact, with Penn Air. The timing, the landings are doing great, so weather doesn't seem to be the problem that it was for United, probably because the connectivity doesn't go through San Francisco anymore, it goes through Portland. Also working on, you know, don't quote me on this because it's going to happen, but whether it's this month, next month, or the month after, a little revision in the schedule because as Penn Air starts going into other markets, it makes more planes and more pilots available, and it will be very beneficial to this community, maybe being able to go out and come back in the same day. Local Transportation Commission meeting, attended that. Also met with constituents regarding homeless encampments in specific areas in the district. Went, had a CSAC, California State Association of Calls Legislative Executive Committee call regarding how to tweak some of the AB 109, some of the recidivism things, some of the things the Governor wants to do regarding juvenile offenders as well. And then met with a few individuals from Solid Waste regarding what they, wanted to find out what they thought our Board was up to and how we can solve the problem. Went to the Regional Transportation Planning Meeting at the wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, most of the people there weren't there to participate on the plan going forward, but rather wanted to lobby for us to change things that were already on the plan or in the works. And then had a planning session for a homeless summit, and that will be going forward. There are some measurable steps we're going to be looking for. And went to the Coast Guard Auxiliary, changing of the guard on Saturday, which Jeff Leighton is the new Commander there. And somewhere in the midst of all that, enjoyed Christmas with the family. I cooked, and then Happy New Year. I do want to thank the community that was supportive of my tenure as Chair. Most importantly, I want to thank staff, because staff is the one that makes sure break you. When it seems like there's a tornado going around up here, they're the ones that are keeping us tied to the ground. So, staff, thank you very much, from administration to department heads all the way down the line, and I look forward to a very successful year under our new leadership as a Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Finnegan. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. I didn't know if you wanted me to cover the issues down with the California State Fish and Game Commission meeting in San Diego, but I'll briefly cover a few of those items that were on their agenda that we've been addressing here as a Board for the last year and a half now. But specific to Blue Creek is why Supervisor Hemmingson and I attended the meeting in, in San Diego, and it was extremely productive meeting for the county, and more importantly, to address issues with the closure that was, in our opinion, arbitrary and capricious at the time. And more importantly, the Commission took an unprecedented step to reevaluate their decision that they made in 2015, which is excellent for our county. We're going to be having discussions on it this evening at a Special Board meeting here that was at the request of Department of Fish and Wildlife. I suspect we'll have a lot of participation, both from those that advocated for the closure and those that advocated to keep the mouth of Blue Creek open. But more importantly, we will address the issue, and more importantly, it'll be shared more openly with the public this time, instead of what we felt was a non-transparent approach to the regulation being put in place in 2015. And also at that meeting, and moving forward quite swiftly, which will also be addressed coming in February 11th, is the state's revision to the environmental impact report on elk. It's long overdue, started in 2003, but more importantly, the state is looking to increase the quotas and split the zone that it currently exists in between Humboldt and Del Norte Counties. This would provide significantly more opportunity to residents of the State of California to have access to these animals, and more importantly, help control issues that we see and conflicts that we currently see with our farmers in our local area. There was no real opposition at that meeting to the environmental impact statement. We'll see going forward in February if, if something else arises, but at this point, the state is fairly confident that things here go smoothly. Let's hope it does for our sake, as sometimes that doesn't always happen. Folks from outside our area, more importantly, folks that don't understand rural issues and those impacts and conflicts with the animals tend to have the louder voice at these meetings, as we've seen the last several years with both the gray wolf and the bobcat most recently. Attended a meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson of Redwood National Park Two by Two. One of the points of interest moving forward is their sesquennial celebration this year, and there's going to be a meeting today at the wastewater treatment facility at 1:00 to discuss outreach, more importantly, advertisement, commercial-type advertisement to help draw people to Redwood National Park this, this year to help and enjoy and celebrate why that park was established. And it is a heck of a tourism recruitment-type opportunity for this community, and I certainly will be going to participate in that. Attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and also, as Supervisor Finnegan spoke of, the Regional Transportation Planning Meeting for 2016. As he had indicated, it was disappointing to see that a process that started a decade ago, specific to Highway 199, 199, was still one of these issues, even though it's funded for construction. That was the main topic of this meeting, and how can we go back and reconsider what has been done? And it was, it was disappointing, and I understand some of the frustration from those that were there, but at the same time, we have to look at the overall benefit to the community in making sure the construction projects on that highway take place. So, hopefully, we'll go forward, get some resolution, and make sure those projects happen in due time. Had a very good tour with the Community Development Department of the Triumph Bridge Project. Now about six, seven months in, residents are being patient. Although there is frustration, there is patience with that second bridge operation and some of the delays with crossing the bridge during certain times of the day, but the bridge is going smoothly, and the abutments, considering the kind of bedrock material that they're going into, are coming along quite nicely. So, if you have an opportunity and do have the privilege of going on a tour, it's a heck of an engineering feat, in my opinion. Also attended a Resource Goals Committee meeting. One of the main points of discussion at that Resource Goals Committee meeting was specific to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act that is faced upon our community in this coming year, and development of a plan if we cannot change our current ranking of medium to a low priority. This would be a significant amount of work and time and resources to the county for potentially a ranking criteria that was not deserved. So, this Friday, Supervisor Hemmingson and I will participate in discussions with Department of Water Resources staff here, and hopefully to see if we could resolve any of the outstanding issues with that current ranking. And I think it'll be a positive discussion. I've had some conversations with the Regional Supervisor, and he will also be on the phone with us that day, and looking forward to that meeting. Attended a Resource Advisory Committee meeting with Supervisor McClure, and that's the Resource Advisory Committee funds projects through a grant process through Title III, I believe, that comes from county, from a county allocation onto Forest Service lands. A great list of projects appeared this year, more importantly, a great list of projects from the county to help repair access to Forest Service roads that are long overdue, and really appreciate the efforts of Ms. Kunkstall and Mr. Daniels in putting together those applications for those dollars, because they received fairly high ranking based on our preliminary results coming out of that, that meeting. Also want to recognize the service for the last six years from Laura Olson from the California Endowment. She will be missed with the Endowment, but I understand she'll still be around and representing the Smolin Foundation and those efforts that are so very important to Del Norte County in, in helping those that are underserved. And I think we'll end there.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I had a busy few weeks with an unfolding Christmas and New Years. It made it kind of a hectic time of the year, but I traveled to the Coastal Commission meeting, where we did the final permitting with the airport, and that was on a consent, which is a giant step in the right direction, that we want to have projects that go forward that are already boxed up where everybody is in consensus. So, I appreciate the airport staff working so closely with the coastal staff and finding a positive solution. The Senior Center, we've been meeting with, doing the Personnel Policy Manual, and Monday we buttoned it up, and then as we sat there, we added about nine more issues, so we're not quite finished, but it's moving forward relatively smoothly, and it's a, it's a great program that's actually, after we put all of our input, it produced this great employee handbook. It was thirty-some pages long. So, I've also been meeting with the Veterans Group, and we're going to have the Point in Time Survey, which is, it's the Veterans Group, but it also deals with homelessness, and the Point in Time Survey is to try to find out how many people in our community are in need of housing or assistance, and that's going to be on January 26th at the Vets Hall, for people to stop in and come in, and then the following week, there will be people that will actually go to some of the encampments to try to get the information from folks to find out what kind of services are needed and where the gaps are for them. And so, at the, and at the fairgrounds on the 26th, there's going to be breakfast, there's going to be food, there's going to hopefully be some fresh socks and fresh gloves for people, and hopefully we can turn people out, because that's going to be the precursor for us to be able to find funding. And Senator DeLeon and Senator McGuire just announced last Monday about a huge amount of money that they're putting towards homelessness in California. So, we will be in good position to start addressing some of the, those dollars, because we'll have a good count, which is the important part to have that. I participated with Supervisor Howard at the RAC. We have about $184,000 in projects that we're giving out, and that's going to happen Thursday night, probably. So, and then there's a second round of funding that's anticipated to come to the forest in June, probably, this year. Was it June? Yeah. And so, we're looking forward to that, and that might be as much as $175,000 to $180,000 again for projects. And projects go anywhere from a new culvert on a road, to a trail enhancement, to water in a campground. So, they're, they're across the board, and we were able to, we were able to, even though it's a huge group of people, it's, you know, it's a 15, 20-person group that has to decide on how to spend this money, and it's a very diverse group, but the group has found some kind of process that, it magically works, and all of a sudden, we can identify of all of the projects, which ones are our priority, and then we just have a little bit of negotiating in the weeds to get them approved. So, it's, it's quite impressive of how the RAC works. Solid Waste met, and then I've also set the agenda for the next Solid Waste meeting. Redwood Coast Transit did have a closed session, and Redwood Coast Transit is also in the final stages of having their RFP out for the, the management position, and that comes back at the end of this month, and then hopefully that process will begin. I attended the UROC signing ceremony, and I too am thankful that now we have cross-deputization in the southern part of our county, which has been sorely lacking for a long time. And it's that kind of partnerships that if we establish them and continue to nurture them, that's how we become a stronger community, because we're not big enough to just do it all by ourselves. We need to have partnerships. So, I think that that's a sterling example of partnerships. The security training I participated in also scared me to death, and my knees still hurt from having to crawl out of this room worried that I was going to be attacked. So, I appreciate it, but it has altered my, it has altered my perception of how I see the world in relationship to when I get out of the car, I'm paying attention to everything around me. When I come in the building, I'm paying attention, I'm looking at cars, I look at people as they arrive. So, it, it really raised my level of concern. So, thank you, Sheriff, for doing that. I don't sleep as well, but thank you. I also attended the Regional Local Transportation Planning Meeting, and I agree that there were people that didn't understand what we were going to be there to talk about, but the window is now open for people to make comments on where you think transportation improvement should happen in our community. And those can be as small as, you know, I live over on Napa Street, and there's this big, there's this big hole, and I want it to be filled, because that is the kind of information that needs to come forward to the Transportation Commission in order for people to assist the Local Transportation Commission in having a planning of what, what are our roads going to look like five years from now, and what do we need in our community? Like, one of mine was that I can't see going up Crescent City Hill at night, because there are no markings on the road. So, those kind of things, that if they can get feedback, it will be helpful, rather than just relying on a meeting to take place, that if people start the communication, I think it would be greatly improved. And on a very sad note, I, one of my favorite teachers of all times, Faith Christ, passed away, and I just want to say that, because she, she was an important person in my life.
Thank you, Supervisor McClure. I meant, I've got quite a few things, but I'm going to go through it relatively quickly, because most of the other supervisors have already reported out, as Supervisor Howard did in our Fish and Game Commission meeting in San Diego. I just want to say it's not very often that we're successful when we visit these agencies, but in this particular case, I think we, we're very successful, so that's all a good thing, and I think good things are going to come out of that. As the other supervisors reported out, I went down to the UROC signing ceremony for the cross-deputization. Afterwards, we had a UROC Two by Two, which had an opportunity to sit down with the new Chair and Vice Chair of the Tribe, which was, was very good. Went through the security training, as the other supervisors indicated. Had a, an update from Merv George, who is our Forest Supervisor for this area, on the travel management plan. Had some stakeholders there. It was just kind of an update with all the fires that have been going on. They've kind of dropped the travel management for about six months there and focused on the fires. So, we didn't have a whole lot to discuss, but what he did discuss, the stakeholders that were there, we're very, very happy to see what was going on. Had an SVAC meeting, which is a Sustainable Forest Action Coalition meeting in Medford. Randy Moore, who is the Regional Director for the Forest for Region Five, and Jim Peña from Region Six, were both there, along with numerous other County Commissioners out of Oregon and supervisors from California. It was kind of a disappointing meeting, because Mr. Peña believes that the county voice should not be heard anymore, or any better than just Joe Blow off the street. So, that was a little disappointing, when we've worked very hard to get it to a different level. As the Supervisor Finnegan and Howard said, we had a Local Transportation Commission meeting, and actually, I had several of them, along with a Finance Committee and Committee meeting, and a, and went to the Regional Planning Meeting, and that's already been reported on. Had a Supervisor Howard said, had a National and State Parks Two by Two. Just a couple of things, they're going to start directing more visitor operations out to Hiuchi. They're going to take them away from Second Street. They're not having very good success down there, it's just not a big enough place. And also, they're going to start closing the new- And also, they're going to start closing the Newton B Drury Parkway the first Saturday of the month, February, March, April, and May. And if that's successful, they may continue to do that throughout the year. So, anyway, we'll see how that works. I had numerous conference calls with Senator McGuire and Wood on the Dungeness Crab Issues, the demonic acid that's going on. That's certainly getting better, but has not cleared up yet. Celebrated Christmas with family and friends. New Years came in very quietly, but Happy New Year. Had a future Facilities Meetings as Supervisor Gitlin stated, went through that, he went through that pretty well. Had a Local Mental Health Board Meeting. We didn't have a quorum, but we kind of discussed some, got some homeless updates and some general mental health updates, even though nothing came out of that meeting. As Supervisor Finnegan said, we had an Airport Meeting and I have to tell, I have to say that the, the, we're getting good feedback from the users of Penn Air, virtually no cancellations, very small number. It's been absolutely great. And as Supervisor Howard said, had a Resource and Environmental Meeting. He went through that pretty well. And on a couple of sad notes, along with Faith Christ, who passed away, my brother passed away last week and, and I went to a celebration of life for, as you may know her, Ms. Jenny, Virginia Subert, who was a longtime resident of Delmar County. And with that, that's it for me. We will move on. We're going to go to a timed item, I'm sure. Thanks. Which is a public comment, period. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you're addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? Please come up.
Hi, I'm Robert Durigo.
Good morning.
District One. Sorry here. Not very good in public. I heard the City Council meeting that the supervisors were going to come up with a similar ordinance towards cannabis economy. Before our leaders get too far ahead of this or behind on this, I hope our community can take over and create a permit, a permit packet addressing the needs of small farmers that place themselves in appropriate agricultural, industrial, or manufacturing zone properties. This can go through law enforcement to assure appropriate security and building and fire, to be sure of safety and filtration for odor mitigation. The DECT Party on the 3rd of July is a nuisance. I held a shop, I held a shoplift for a couple, I told you about it years ago actually. And Mr. Finnegan bartended that time and I don't want to point any fingers, we all have a drink once in a while.
I've never bartended at the DECT Party.
You, you told me that the Smith River Rancheria, that you volunteer bartended the third, well, I guess I'll have to retract that if I don't have any evidence of that, but I attended a meeting and in the preamble, I believe you talked about what you'd been doing over the 4th of July weekend, but anyway, so we have the, the 3rd of July DECT Party, that's a nuisance. Parking lots at bars is a nuisance. Any venue that retails alcohol is a nuisance. As youth shoplift and law enforcement is overburdened among a pile of other concerns, our two historic industries employ for the most, employ the most dangerous work in America. Where the cannabis industry goes, harm reduction follows. The poorest inhabitants of California can handle the nuisance of the most valuable agricultural product in the state. The harm already done by not making a route for this industry in our county since 1996 is enough. I hope all of you respond to my request to work with you in understanding the full nature of the varied businesses that we might attract. I have written you all in this regard. I have happened, have problems with my email. You wrote me back and I haven't heard back from anybody else, so maybe it might be me there. I'll try and rewrite you. With that, I have a question. What will we be addressing? When will we be addressing this issue? Do you guys know yet? Have you guys talked about addressing the two, the March 1st deadline?
Yeah, this is public comment. You have a period, this isn't a, we're not going to go back.
It's not on the agenda today, so I won't be being addressed today.
If you would like to talk with the CIO, he may give you a better idea.
I just have a hard time getting agendas. I, I just wasn't sure if that was coming up today. I'm sure it's coming up before March 1st. No? Okay. All right. Well, I guess that's all I have to say. I remember Martha McClure, you know, mentioning a child that was using cannabis and, and the gateway drug theory is a good one, but I got this bottle of water out of a case, I had to go to the liquor aisle and the safe way to get it. You know, that's some impulse shopping there. You're getting your healthiest shopper to go to a quite destructive aisle, you know, I mean, it could be on the soda aisle, right? There's nothing but liquor products there in cases of bottled water. That's the only place you're going to case bottled water. So, I mean, it's quite a hypocrisy on nuisance. A third of our drivers that die on the road, you know, it's, it's because of alcohol.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other public comment?
Victoria Dickey, I live in David Finnegan's district. What he was speaking about was marijuana. It looks like, and I hope I'm wrong, it looks like there, that it will pass and become something that theoretically we can tax. It is something that we are always hearing doesn't hurt anyone. Maybe, maybe it would hurt the people who are taking it because it may be a gateway For whatever it's worth, if you have a chance to tax it, tax it 175,000 percent. Not that I have an opinion, but you can take that money and use it to reimburse me for the damage that has been done to my homes by people who get into marijuana. They destroy things and they don't understand. Walls are permeated with this stuff. The State of California says a security deposit can only be two times the rent. And then a little kicker that they throw in is after a year, you have to give a 60-day notice rather than a 30-day notice and you don't have the money to cover whatever. Bottom line is if you have the opportunity, you can always make changes, but if you make the gateway high enough, maybe it will help protect our community against what I see as a problem that I don't even know the boundaries of. I'm not in that world, but I am affected by it. So, for whatever worth, that may be worth. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, then I'm going to close the public comment period. You will be, you will have the opportunity to speak on items that come up, as they come up on the agenda. And just to speak to the cannabis, we're going to another meeting in Ukiah, no, no, in Ukiah at this time?
Yeah, there is a second summit. It is more related to the potential of having an initiative on the state ballot regarding recreational use of marijuana. There's also going to be some internal meetings regarding the legislation that was recently passed by Senator McGuire Wood and I forget the third party, I apologize, but the deadlines are extended out and obviously there will be robust discussion over any ordinance that comes forward.
Right. And it's just a, these meetings are just to prepare ourselves for whatever is thrust upon us. We will not be the ones that will decide whether recreational marijuana is legal in California. That will be decided for us by the larger populations. But we do need to prepare for what comes down for us and that's the reason for those meetings. Okay, we're going to go back to the County Administrative Officer. Jay, you want to give us a little report?
Yeah, quickly, I, I attended a few of the meetings that the Board members also attended, the UROC two-by-two and the deputization signing ceremony, had multiple meetings with staff and department heads, had a labor management meeting, had various meetings on emergency services, some conference calls regarding weather, personnel-related meetings, sat on an interview panel for the, the final interview of the Animal Control Officer to help them out. Also sat on a panel yesterday actually for the Open Deputy County Council Position. The, I've been working on the potential MOU with Humboldt County to assist us with the AgCom related position that Mr. Buckles will be vacating and was on the final interview and made the decision regarding the Veteran Services Officer who works under administration. We had some really good candidates, excellent candidates. It was a very difficult one. I think we got an excellent candidate with a lot of energy and really wants to assist veterans. Attended the Future Facilities Meeting and the Resources and Conservation Committee Meeting, worked on Department Ed evaluations, have been reviewing the government's, the governor's proposed budget, have been involved in a staff discussion and the preparedness for the medical marijuana ordinance. And just on Saturday, as everybody knows, one of the departments I have is Recreation. One of the ones I'm very proud of because I started with the county in Recreation just a couple of years ago. But our youth basketball started on Saturday and the last count I had was 541 youngsters starting at kindergarten going through sixth grade. That's up considerably from last year. I want to thank the Delmar Unified School District. We use Crescent Oaks gyms as well as a recreation gym and Building Maintenance did a considerable amount of janitorial work and cleanup work to get everything going. Unfortunately, we don't have enough facilities to spread everything out. We will be looking at having to probably expand next year if these numbers continue. But if anybody ever wanted to be entertained, go watch some of these games. You have the young athletes that are coming up, the kindergarten, first and second graders, you could sit there all day and watch that. And it's, it's a great program. Kelsey Bozeman and Justin Isless are a Recreation Coordinator and Recreation Assistant and they've been putting in overtime in order to get that started and keep it going and with minimal complaints because the, the games do go considerably long in the rec gym because it's the only one that can actually accommodate the real little kids. It, it went well, it was well organized and we had a lot of people come forward and say how much they enjoyed it. So, I, I suggest if you ever get a chance on a Saturday, run by one of the gyms and just watch for a little while.
Is that it? Great. That's great to hear. Glad to see the Recreation Department doing well. Okay, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. I get a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any public comment on the Consent Agenda only? Seeing no public comment, we're going to bring it back to the Board. Any discussion? Kylie, would you pull the vote please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, please recuse me from item number one.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to some budget transfers.
I would move to approve budget transfers number 12-04, 12-05, 01-02, and 01-03. Items 13, 14, 15, and 16 on the agenda.
Second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, then we're going to bring it back to the Board. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you pull the vote please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on, Supervisor Finnegan and myself will have to recuse ourselves, so I will ask Supervisor Howard, Vice Chair Howard, to step in and take over item number
So, this is just an item to continue the public hearing for a street vacation application in Pacific Shore subdivision and approve the attached resolution of the vacation of Portex Street within the Pacific Shore subdivision as requested by the Assistant Engineer. Ms. Bauer?
Hello, today is actually the opening of the continued public hearing.
Okay.
Is that what you have?
Please.
Okay. So, the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority has applied for a street vacation in the Pacific Shore subdivision. We have gone ahead and done all the noticing for public hearing and done an analysis of staff of the California Streets and Highways Code. We had to make several findings along the way and those include not landlocking parcels, making sure it's consistent with the general plan, which there isn't a general plan for the Pacific Shore subdivision, doing a sequel analysis where staff is recommending it is exempt, as well as determining that it would not be useful for a non-motorized transportation facility, collecting appropriate payment, and making sure it's in the public's best interest and not necessary for present or prospective public use as a road facility. So, we have attached a resolution of vacation with proposed findings as well as conditions. Are there questions?
Ms. Rosanna, just for clarification, we don't, the Board knows the reason why. Would you tell the listening audience on television, those here in the audience, why we are vacating Portlex Street?
Okay, this, we, the airport is proposing to vacate Portex Street for two complete environmental mitigation required by the California Coastal Commission for the runway safety project at Jack Back to Merrifield. Oh, I guess it's not for the runway safety area, it is for the terminal. I was unaware of that.
I, I have a process question. We're opening the public hearing and can we do the resolution on the same day?
Yes, we can because it's not an ordinance that we're doing. The public hearing, the noticing was done prior to last meeting and then it got continued because the newspaper, it had to be put in the newspaper at a certain time, so that's why the public hearing was continued from last time.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to read the resolution in the record?
I think you have to, you can.
Supervisor McClure? I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution of vacation 2016 double X, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, the State of California, ordering the vacation of a segment of Portex Street within the Pacific Shore subdivision.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Kylie, could you please hold the Board?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Vice Chair Howard?
Yes.
And they were paying attention. This is good. Welcome back, Chair Hemmingson.
Thank you Vice Chair. Okay, we're going to move on to our regular govern, general government items. Item 19, approve and adopt proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 7.65, Section 7.65-030 to update the membership formula to the Multi-County Partnership Health Plan of California Commission as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. Barbara?
I'm in the wrong direction.
We spoke about this at the last meeting, partnership healthcare bases, the membership of their Board on the number of Medi-Cal recipients in each county. So, they've changed it to one representative for up to 25,000 people. So, that doesn't affect us because we only have about 10,000 or 11,000 Medi-Cal recipients here. So, we will still remain with one Board Member even though their rules have changed.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve, adopt proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 7.65, Section- Move to approve, adopt proposed ordinance to amend chapter seven point six five, section seven point six five dash zero three zero.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to a transfer of sewer connection. Heidi, were you going to speak on this, or?
Sure. Good morning. We have one of the last remaining prepaid sewer connections from the time when the county actually sold sewer connections. And we have a situation where we have someone who owns one and who would like to transfer it to another individual who has development plans in very close proximity to where the original development was going to occur. From our staff perspective, we feel that this is a good thing. It helps us kind of clean up our records.
Cool.
So I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. And a second, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Moving on, I'm going to review and authorize a chair to sign a deed and lease restriction to satisfy the special condition number nine for coastal development permit for the Airport Authority. Susan?
When the Border Coast was issued the notice of intent to issue the CDP for the terminal project by the Coastal Commission in December, one of the special conditions is the deed and lease restriction that you see before you today. That deed and lease restriction basically puts upon the land that the terminal project will take place on the special conditions that are included in the notice of intent. So at first look, there's 13 special conditions. All of those special conditions except two have to do with the construction of the terminal project itself. The two that this would affect, and it's ongoing, saying that on those parcels where we're going to be building in the future, there will remain, these two items, one of them is the materials restriction, and that restricts us to non-reflective materials, earth tones, and low wattage on lighting. The other restriction would be if we replaced landscaping, it would need to continue to be native grass, native plants. And those are the only two restrictions that really apply on this deed restriction. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Susan, she's up here?
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-two, approve the addition of two public health nurses and one prevention program coordinator and one vocational assistant. Barbara?
We received an additional $538,000 this year through partnership. It's a program called intergovernmental transfer, which it's federal money that comes to the state briefly. There's a rate that they give partnership, and when partnership pays $15 and the state says, or then the feds say you pay 20, then they make up that $5 for people that serve Medi-Cal clients, which we do. So we were able to apply for this money. It's money available to us every year. We're getting ready to submit our request for this coming year. So out of that 538,000, our priorities were to hire two public health nurses, one for child welfare, to work with child welfare families, the other one for mental health and home visiting, as well as vocational assistant. The prevention program coordinator will work with criminal justice. We're very interested in continuing to see movement with a Veterans Mental Health Treatment Court, programs in the jail, jail reentry, probation. So that person will hopefully be able to help us put all of those pieces together. And a vocational assistant will be going to child welfare.
Great. It's always nice to, you know, instead of taking away positions, it's always nice to see that finally in a position to add a few. But how, I was just curious on how you made the assessment on what you need. I can understand that these look like they're very needed. Are these the only positions that are allowed to be paid under this grant? Or you, did you do an assessment to figure out this is what you needed?
We did an assessment as we're looking at providing child welfare families with the best opportunity to reunify and be successful over time. One of the barriers is healthcare and education and nutrition. And now that they're at Washington on the healthcare district's campus, it was a perfect opportunity for us to work with those families to make sure that they are linking with the healthcare that they need and they really understand how to eat well, what their medical conditions are. Mental health is in need of a nurse that can really work with our psychiatry patients. If somebody has a question, the doctor's not available, and to really maybe do some of the home visiting to our mental health clients.
Cool, thank you. Any, any other questions?
Yeah, Chair, Barbara, the prevention program coordinator, this is something that is the community correction plan. Is this something that was already funded through the community?
No.
Plan, or should have been funded through the plan? And now you can, we can finally get somebody to do it?
I don't know if it was funded during the plan, but in the little over a year that I've been here, it seems like that's been a tremendous issue. We've got mentally ill, incompetent to stand trial people in our jail, and it's creating a big crisis for the people, the people that work at the jail. And how can we help them out by diverting them to Mental Health Treatment Court or getting programs into jail? And making sure that when they come out of jail, we've got the support for them, for them to be successful, or not just. So that was one of the reasons that was a priority, just because we've heard that it's just such a problem and resources at the jail and at our site are limited.
See, I was focusing on the prevention program, not the unhelpable, if you will.
Well, hopefully we'll prevent them from recidivism.
Yeah.
And keeping them out of the hospital.
Any other question? Comments? Thank you. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the addition of two public health nurses, one and two, and one prevention program coordinator and one vocational assistant, one or two, within the Department of Health and Human Services.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we're going to bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-three, this is something I brought up. Pete Leipzig, who has been around for a long time in the fishing industry, commercial fishing industry, has been asked to apply for a post on the Pacific Fisheries Management Council. He is asked to get support, and I certainly support him, and hopefully this board does again too. We have in the past, so I'm hoping that we can move this along. Can I get a motion?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to legislative and budget issues, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters per Mr. County of Del Norte. Roger, you brought up something earlier, and I'm not sure that maybe it's something that needs to be put on the agenda before we can act on it, but go ahead.
Well, it's, thank you very much, Chair Hemmingson. Four years ago, I learned that Sutter Coast Hospital had been granted a hardship tax exemption on the assessed valuation of the hospital, which is about $38 million. And it was granted a discount on the tax assessment for the Sutter Coast Clinic. This exemption, based on the fact that the county gets about 19 cents on the dollar, results in roughly about $72,000 worth of lost revenue to Del Norte County. So I'm asking our Board of Supervisors, and if it has to be done in a subsequent meeting, I'd like it agendized, to issue a formal request to the California Department of Equalization to consider and possibly revoke Sutter Coast's exemption in our county. My reasoning is sevenfold. Sutter Coast has ignored board requests for hospital meeting minutes and financial data. Number two, Sutter Coast continues to hold closed-door meetings. Number three, Sutter Coast and Sutter Health have retaliated against local physicians who have opposed Sutter's plans to move hospital ownership out of Del Norte County and downgrade Sutter Coast to a critical access facility. This retaliation is manifested in pay cuts to now-departed physician Dr. Manfred Ritter and includes subsidies to a physician to compete with now-soon-to-be-departed Dr. Davis, the urologist here in Del Norte County, illegal peer review, and false allegations against Dr. Duncan, again, another outspoken critic of critical access, and in 2015, inclusion of the non-Sutter affiliated physicians from the provider panel for Sutter Coast's exclusive health plan. Number four, Sutter generated a $10.8 million profit in 2014, and even though it reported projected losses through 2018, according to 2015 figures, it looks indeed that the profit 10.8 million will be duplicated. Again, very robust situation for Sutter Coast. Sutter's self-funded hospital study performed by the Camden Group has been discredited by this Board of Supervisors and the City Council on unanimous 10 to nothing votes. Sutter executives have repeatedly misled the community, including false reports that the hospital was not discussing critical access when it was in fact discussing such, false reports that Sutter Coast has not been profitable since 2008, and false statements that Sutter Coast Hospital beds in excess of the 25 critical bed limit at set empty for years. And finally, number seven, Sutter Coast has overseen increasing numbers of emergency room patient transfers out of our community, from approximately 271 transfers in 2006 to a record 671 emergency room transfers and a total of 872 total transfers in 2014. So these hardship tax exemptions are appropriately given to charitable organizations serving the community interests. Sutter's use of this exemption to increase executive salaries at the expense of Del Norte County while misleading the public, retaliating against dissenting physicians, and refusing to release meeting records is entirely inappropriate. I ask this board to take action on this.
Any other board members have comments?
Thank you, Chair Finnegan.
Blame him for this one.
CEO Serena, on a hardship, I don't understand enough about a hardship tax exemption to really know what Supervisor Gitlin's requesting, but I'd like to learn more about it. And obviously, that might come out in the discussion if, if we as a board recommend that this is put on our next agenda. How would we approach it? How would you approach it as a CAO? Would that be something that council would look into? I mean, basically, there's a request to send a letter to them.
I think that we would request the information that Supervisor Gitlin's brought forward, and then if the board so directs, do the research to come back with as much information as possible. It may include county council, could include the auditor controller, could include the state controller, IRS. I mean, it just, we'd have to do the research to try to answer your questions upfront, if at all possible, and then through the discussion, there may be other questions that have to come out of there and have research. But the action today, obviously, would be a direction to staff.
Sure.
Anybody else? David, do you have anything?
No, I think that there's, I think direction to staff is probably the appropriate. I would assume that that was a motion made by Supervisor Gitlin, and then you can do it by consensus or seconds and votes. But I think that a clarification on, when you're talking about the Board of Equalization, there's specific rules of who qualifies for exemptions and who doesn't. And I think that while some of the stuff is very irritating that Supervisor Gitlin brought up, it may not bring credence to the fact of denying a tax exemption or defining whether somebody is not-for-profit or exempt. So I think there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done, and I would certainly support our staff, as we have in the past, looking into this and giving us the information necessary to have a good conversation.
Yeah, and I have, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with penalizing an entity in the county and thinking that's going to make things better. Yeah, I, you know, and I understand the whole issue with, with Sutter Health, and I'm not very happy with them at times either, but I think maybe this is a discussion that the two by two should have maybe with the healthcare district, and maybe we should work together. Because if there's, if they, if they are making money, then that money should possibly be available to the community. So maybe the community should be looking for ways, rather than taxing them and having that money sent away. Maybe we should be looking at ways to work together and see if we can't get some more of that money spent within the community. So I would, you know, I would try to look for, you know, a better way of working together rather than, than totally, you know, just saying, oh, fine, if you're going to start making money, we're going to no longer allow you to be tax exempt. And I'm not saying that's not the right way to go, and like Supervisor Finnegan, I don't have a problem with staff taking a look at that, but maybe have a discussion.
If I can go back on what I said to clarify, there really is, you hit the nail on the head, there's a process, and there is a two by two, and that's where it should go first. And they, and I think that it's appropriate to send it to that, and I'm not sure who sits on it, and it may even change. But it needs to go to that two by two, and of course, administration is at that, and they can clarify what questions you need. If that is the direction, the recommendation of that two by two, back to this board.
Supervisor McClair, it goes?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree that it needs to go through the process of the two by two, but I also think that there's a possibility of here, that you could take that two by two and actually meet with Sutter management also, not just the healthcare district, because this is such a convoluted argument of what's happening, and, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, wow, if Sutter's having such a fabulous profits, maybe it might be attractive to another corporation. Because when they were losing money, it definitely was not attractive to another corporation. But that's just speculation on my part. And as far as the, going through the state Board of Equalization, I think that that could be something that we could explore. But I know that there's been a lot of angst that Sutter is a nonprofit hospital. Well, the National Football League is a nonprofit organization. So nonprofit isn't just where you're thinking that it's just someone doing charity. So it's, it's a very complicated system, and I only know that part of the reason that we are flying so many people out and that we need to bring in backup doctors in relationship to urology and orthopedic.
Cardiology.
Well, no, we don't even have that.
No, I know.
I don't know if we're big enough for that. But the reason is that we have, as stated earlier by the, by the Director of Health and Human Services, we have 11,000 people in this community that are on Medi-Cal. And that means you have to have doctors that will see Medi-Cal patients. And that is why they need to bring in these doctors, because there's, there's no access to care. So they have to have, we have to have a balance, and that's what this is about. And I'm sorry that there are private practitioners that are suffering, but their door's not open to Medi-Cal. And that is extremely critical access for the members of our community. So it's easy to jump to conclusions, it's easy to have a lot of issues. You know, I would like to see the healthcare district, for instance, spend the $400,000 that's been spent on attorneys. I would like to see that go to upgrading our MRI, because I worry that on weekends, we don't have an MRI open here. Because I worry that on weekends, we don't have an MRI open here. Because we don't have it staffed, and if you're having a heart attack, you can't take the medication that can save you, because they have to do an MRI to give you that medic, to make sure, otherwise you could bleed out. So it's those kind of issues that I wish we were focusing on, instead of making, I think maybe what you were saying, let's bring it back together, let's see where we can have a conversation, rather than trying to beat each other up with lawsuits and, and threatening people's, you know, their tax-exempt status and that kind of thing. I want us to come back as a community and start the discussion, because I want a hospital. I mean, my husband and I have talked long and hard that if something happened and we didn't have a hospital here, like Fort Bragg is facing the closure of their hospital, Willetts has faced the closure of their hospital. I want a hospital here because I want to live here for the rest of my life. And so I think we should be back in a positive direction, talking to all the players, rather than this kind of trying to beat each other up from different, the different diocese or from the different corporations. And so I'm, I'm saddened to see that there's actually money going to be used by the healthcare district to run a campaign against Sutter, as opposed, that $50,000 that they're going to have a smear campaign on, I could feed I don't know how many people for $50,000 and improve the health of our community. So that's my two cents on this, is that I, I understand what's happening, but I really think that we could have the power of the Board of Supervisors, of this diocese, could actually turn the corner and stop the fight, and turn it back into a community where we know we are cared for.
Supervisor Howard, did you have anything?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I, you know, I, I don't know that I 100% agree as far as basically of stopping the fight. I would like to work more together, but, but I do admire those people that stepped up and got us to the point that we're at, where people are taking notice of what's going on. So I think, I think that's very valuable. But at this point, you know, we can keep, we can keep beating on Sutter Health all you want, and still end up with Sutter Health. So why don't we take an avenue of maybe trying to get them to spend the money that they're making in this community? And, and maybe that should be a first step. I'm not saying it's the only step, and I'm not saying that Supervisor Gitlin is, is wrong in, in maybe what he's asking, because I understand, you know, where he's coming from. And maybe that is something that we do down the road. But I think maybe first steps are that we get together with the healthcare district and, and make sure that we have consensus, that we're working in the same direction, rather than over here and over there. And hopefully, the goal is to make this a better community and for health, or the healthcare services in this community better. So that, that I hope is what we're looking forward to. So I think that we will put it on the agenda, but I think it should go to the two-by-two first, and then from the two-by-two, we'll put it on the agenda. Is that okay, staff? Can we work with that? Maybe set something up with... And, and if we can get Mr. Hanna or a representative of the hospital there also, so we can discuss this, I think would be, be a great thing to do also.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Just as a closing note, this is not an unprecedented action. As you, many of you may know, Blue Shield California has lost its, its tax-exempt status on property it owns for similar kinds of activity. And what we're really talking about here is the veteran community. This comes on the back of the poor, this $10.8 million profit. People, we are, we are burdened with a largest, this Supervisor McClair mentioned, a large amount of Medi-Cal people. And $10.8 million, when they, when the hospital says we're losing money through 2018, is disingenuous. And we're getting wrong information. So I know you, we all want to sit down and reason with Sutter Coast, but so far, I've been disappointed by some of the results, the closed meetings, the ignoring of the Camden report, there was no call for a urologist, one of the members of our community is leaving our community, not voluntarily. You can't, you can't make a, can't practice here. And why? And why is that? So I think this, I'm glad we're going to discuss this, it should be out in the open, and let's come to a resolution where we can get our community to be more responsive to its, to the people who live here.
Yeah, and I, I agree. I think the need for a cardiologist is certainly higher than for a urologist, but, you know, I, I'm not in that business, so I don't, I don't know how they run, run their operation. But I do think it, it deserves a conversation, and I think we'll have that.
And I just want to add that I think earlier today, we heard from two supervisors that finally made inroads with Fish and Wildlife. And they made that because they didn't give up. Yeah, there were meetings after meetings after meetings that were disappointing, but as long as we, as a board, keep our eye on the prize and keep trying and trying to figure stuff out, that's where we're going to, that's where we're going to be able to move this community forward and, and have better, better systems all around.
Thanks. Anything else? Jay?
Oh.
Okay. Jay, did you want to...
Clarification is for, as a collective board to direct, staff to set the two-by-two with the healthcare district to discuss the issue, and then after that meeting, bring it back to the board for a public discussion.
Sure. And you will include somebody from Sutter Health on that? Or at least make the request. If they refuse not to come, that just kind of sends a, I hope they don't do it. That kind of sends a message. Do you have anything else, Jay, on legislative and budget matters?
Well, I, I touched on the amendment to the McGuire and primarily Woodbill, and we have had a quick discussion through County Council and CDD. We'll be setting a process up to bring that back before the board. We know that there are going to be diverse opinions regarding any ordinance that comes up. We've had them in the past, but we do have some time now in order to address those. The state is not in, in position yet to regulate or even set out the guidelines. So one of the items in, Chairman, you brought it up earlier, the summit that's coming up in early March, will put us in touch with all of the northern counties to look at what they're addressing or, or thinking of addressing on recreational, but also can have some discussion on the medical side. That is probably the most pertinent legislation right now that we're trying to deal with locally. We don't have any recommendations for letters today. Budget-wise, the board will see, so mid-year, beginning in January, once the quarter's closed out, then we'll know a little bit more, and we'll be bringing back a report to the board on the mid-year, updating the board on where we're at, positive or negative, and any suggestions or recommendations. The other item that has come up since we had our last meeting was the governor's proposed budget, which he sends out in early January every year. Just a couple of updates. There is increased spending on K through 12 directly relating to Delmar County government. That isn't necessarily an issue with our budget, but it's a positive to the county overall. It provides only one year of the PIL payments again, and RCRC and CSAC are continuing to advocate on our behalf, and so are our representatives in getting the retro paybacks, you know, which is still significant. That was a point noted in both the reports coming back and analysis from RCRC and CSAC. There was $250 million allocated for jail construction specifically for counties that weren't awarded in the past. And we have applied twice, we've been unsuccessful both times. So we are, we'll be preparing and working with the sheriff to come up with a program-related application that can assist us in getting some upgrades, as well as addressing some of the issues that AB 109 brings forward, as well as what you heard through Health and Human Services. There was $2.6 million for ongoing support to fairs. There was also another $4 million for critical infrastructure for fairs, so that's a positive. They have now come forward, or will be coming forward, a five-year infrastructure plan, which he's put off, or the governor's put off for now for several years. And that would include improvements to courts. And the reason I bring this up is, as the board knows, we have a joint occupancy agreement, and we have an obligation that if the courts does improvements to our courthouse that we no longer own, that they took away from us, we still have an obligation to pay 37% of the improvements. And yes, I always put it that way, because it's a thorn in my side. But it's something that we will have to be looking at. There is a project that they have not yet budgeted for nor scheduled that addresses the roof on the courthouse, which is significant, and we would have to pay 37% of that bill. It's a really strange agreement, but it's statewide. And even though it's their structure, the local government would be asked to pony up some money on that. We've been having those meetings and discussing it, and the gentlemen that we work with are apologetic, but it's not their decision. So those are some of the more significant things coming out of the governor's budget. There were a number of other items that we'll analyze to see how that affects us locally. There are some opportunities. There weren't any significant ones that really look to assist our general fund right away. So we'll be working with our advocates to get our ledge platform discussed, and I think we're on the same page as many of our rural partners.
Thank you. And just as a side note, Supervisor McClair, I mentioned that the NFL was a nonprofit organization, and after the dismal performance of the 49ers, you can understand that.
We should take away that.
So, we understand. Anything else from board members? Mr., Supervisor Howard?
Just one, and, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, I really would like to see this board celebrate some of our successes in 2015, more importantly, bring that back to the attention of the public. Just wondering where our CEO is on that message.
I failed to report that out. Next agenda, I had a couple of things coming in from departments. I have done it in a non-PowerPoint process, but it's, I can report on that at the next meeting. And there are a lot of successes that we have not necessarily, I think, celebrated, and I'll go over as many as I can in the time that I have.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, there, we are having a meeting, a special meeting tonight at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:30, 7? I can't remember if it's, has it got a time on it?
As long as you let it go.
As long as I let it go. It'll be on the Fish and, Fish and Wildlife will be here, California Fish and Wildlife will be here to discuss the Blue Creek closure and Klamath River regulations, sports fishing regulations. So any of you that, whether you're opposed or in favor, I would like to see you there, get your comments in. And with that, I believe we're adjourned.